I'd like to call the May sixth, two thousand twenty-five. North Providence Town Council meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And remain standing for a moment of silence that we will dedicate to our beloved Senate President Dominic Ruggiero that passed away at the beginning of this month.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible vote. With regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of April first, two thousand twenty-five. Do you have a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved, second.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Famigetti, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number two, fiscal year budget, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, Mayor Lombardi to present the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six for acceptance by the town council. Mayor, I'm gonna read your letter into the record, did you wanna say anything or? Okay. Bear with me, I forgot my glasses in the car. So, ah, they won't worry, don't worry. Dear council members, in accordance with section five dash two dash two of the North Providence Charter, I am submitting the proposed budget for fiscal year commencing on July first, two thousand twenty-five. Thanks to consistent and effective fiscal management, our administration and the town council have successfully adopted budgets with no tax increases for the past nine years. However, this fiscal year presents a unique challenge due to circumstances beyond our direct control. The bankruptcy of Prospect Charter Care, the owner of Our Lady of Fatima Hospital, and the subsequent acquisition of the hospital's assets by a nonprofit corporation will result in a tax exemption. This leads to a revenue loss of one million eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars this fiscal year, and an anticipated three million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-nine dollars loss in fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. To offset this loss, the proposed budget includes a tax increase of sixty cents per thousand of assessed value. I am also actively engaging with our legislative delegation and the governor's office to advocate for budget amendments that could mitigate some of the revenue shortfall. Rest assured, I am committed to exploring every possible avenue to recover these funds and minimize the impact on our taxpayers. Despite these challenges, our administration remains dedicated to enhancing our community. This year, we are continuing our investment in children's future with two new elementary schools, making North Providence the only district in Rhode Island with entirely newly constructed state-of-the-art elementary facilities. Additionally, our administration will prioritize improvements to the town's aging infrastructure by using American Rescue Plan Act Opera Funds. This fiscal year, we will be restoring the tennis courts at the Ritchie Middle School, installing new windows and entrance doors at the Town Hall Building, surveying and designing a solution for the drainage problems at Saint John Circle and Bicentennial Way, and undertaking road resurfacing. As mayor, I want to assure you and all residents that our administration is committed to maintaining fiscal responsibility and strengthening our town's financial stability. This budget is designed to secure the necessary revenue to sustain essential government operations and address the financial impact of Prospect Charter Care's bankruptcy and sale of Our Lady Fatima Hospital to the nonprofit entity. I look forward to collaborating with the council members throughout the budget process to pass a budget that is both fiscally sound and responsive to the needs of our taxpayers. Very truly yours, Charles A. Lombardi, mayor. Do you have a motion to accept the budget as presented?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number three, Coletti Farm Property, Mayor Lombardi requests discussion and possible vote on the current design proposal from Rad Sports for Coletti Multi-Use Field. I am going to move this matter to the May twenty-seventh meeting at seven P M. I'd like to entertain that motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Martone. Are there questions?
I'll just say one thing, because I know there's a couple people here that are usually here for, uh, uh, Coletti. A couple of the residents reached out and asked for a standalone meeting rather than proceed tonight. Um, and they also asked for advanced, uh, uh, plans so that they could see them ahead of time. So that's the reason why this is getting continued again. Councilman Martone and I met with Mayor Lombardi and Rad, and we shared a lot of the concerns that we had, that the community had last, uh, meeting that, uh, when we met. So, uh, they are planning to incorporate that and, uh, invite you guys on the twenty-seventh to see the, uh, the final result.
Okay, thank you, councilman, mayor. Thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, J L and Bowery Investments LLC DBA Dana's Sports Lounge. Representative of Dana's Lounge to appear for a three-month check-in on the opening of the business after a flood and meeting of the requirements on liquor license. State your name for the record, please.
Yes, uh, good evening, my name is John Manny, I'm here on behalf of the license holder, this is Amanda Thornley, she's a manager there. As far as an update goes, uh, we still have issues that construction or reconstruction hasn't started yet. Initially, there's two insurance companies fighting over the situation, I think we straightened that out, but the money is starting to come in now to make repairs, they have been closed the entire time. Uh, so I'm gonna respectfully request, uh, that this matter be put over for two months if that's possible. I think that is a decent timeframe that they'll have substantially most of the work done.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Attorney Manny? We'll continue for three.
Thank you very much.
All right, yeah, um, I'd like to entertain that motion to continue this for three months. Motion been made by Councilman Pollock, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, is there any other questions?
This is to our August meeting?
August, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Item number five, Class F Liquor License, Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F-one license for Saint Anthony's Church for the Saint Anthony's Feast to be held from June sixth, two thousand twenty-five through June eighth, two thousand twenty-five. This is a license we give them every year, do I have a motion to approve the Class F license?
Motion approved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Pollock, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number six, Entertainment License, Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of an entertainment license for Saint Anthony's Church for the Saint Anthony's Feast to be held from June sixth, two thousand twenty-five through June eighth, two thousand twenty-five. Same thing, do I have a motion to approve the entertainment license? Okay, just note for the record, Councilman Laporte will refuse. Do you have a motion to approve the entertainment license? Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions on this? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seven, Class F-one Liquor License, Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F-one Liquor License for Enchanted Sip Mobile Bar for an event at Camp Meon on May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, is there anyone here? Just come up and state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Sonia Torres.
Thank you. You all have the information in front of you, is there any questions? Councilman?
Have you done it over there before?
Um, I have not, I've only been open for a year and, um, I have, I was asked to do an event last year, but I really didn't know what it entailed, so this is my first time.
Okay.
Uh, what's the event?
It's a wedding.
Okay. Motion to approve.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Martone to approve, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, good luck. All right, number eight, Class F-one Liquor License, Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a Class F-one License for Will Mary C. Merchant, DBA Crazy Hour, R I, for an event at Camp Meon on August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, just state your name for the record, please.
Will Mary Merchant.
Okay, you all have the information in front of you, is there any questions? Do you have a motion to approve the F-one?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second, seconded by Councilman Pollock, any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you, good luck. Item number nine, Victuling License, Town Council to consider the approval of a Victuling License for Champagne Pizza and Grill LLC DBA Champagne Pizza and Grill, two twenty, twenty-two, forty-four Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Just state your name for the record, please.
My name is Perry Vargas, I'm here to translate for Santos and his wife Celestina, the owners of Champagne Pizza and Grill LLC.
Thank you. Is there any questions? You all have the information in front of you?
Was he affiliated with the previous establishment?
He was not.
Okay. Does he have, uh, any experience?
He does, he, he used to work at a restaurant as a chef for Ivy Tavern on Hope Street, Providence.
Is he gonna be doing, uh, delivery?
Uh, the, the plan is they're gonna be using third parties like Reed Store Dash for delivery.
I, I'm sorry, oh, third parties, you said?
Third parties.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Victuling?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve, I just, is this the place we gave the liquor license to not that long ago?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion's been approved by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number ten, Outdoor License, Town Council to consider the approval for an outdoor dining license for Champagne Pizza and Grill LLC DBA Champagne Pizza and Grill, two, twenty-two, forty-four Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Where would you put the outdoor seating?
It's gonna be on the, like, right in, in front of the, uh, actual establishment? By, by the windows, the, uh, I think they have that sidewalk there.
I only ask because that back parking lot, there's a lot of, uh, congestion, there's competing businesses, the parking is an issue over there.
You want me to just let them know to refrain from park, from doing the seating in the back?
Well, that, yes, to start, but I don't know if the council people that represent that district have an issue with it, let me, let me ask them first.
I just wanna make sure they know the, the liquor license isn't going with it, correct?
No, 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 they didn't turn in it and she doesn't want to transfer it. She didn't even turn the licensing app, so.
So he doesn't? That's, so he can't have it, he have to come back? And he would have to come back and get our approval, because with, with outdoor dining with that, that adds, and then doing the Uber and all that with, with the alcohol, just don't want it to become an, an issue. So, if I'm not mistaken, I think there's a couple of tables outside and front already. No.
No, not, not at the moment.
Okay.
So, if, the, the, your drawing has two tables in front, so that would be what your outdoor entertainment, uh, outdoor licensing?
Yes.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the two seats outdoor for, uh, outdoor seating.
I'll second that.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Martone, is there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Good luck, thank you. Item number eleven, Outdoor License, Town Council to consider the approval of an outdoor license for Elite Lounge and Bistro LLC DBA Elite Bar and Bistro, seventeen fifty-nine Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, is there anyone here from Elite? Hey, there being, is there anyone here from Elite? Is there anyone here from Elite? Okay, there being none, do I have a motion to move this off the agenda?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twelve, Victuling License, Town Council to consider the approval of a Victuling License for Clever Pennefield DBA K and G Diner, eleven thirty-seven Charles Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Just state your name for the record, please.
Uh, my name, Clever Pennefield.
Thank you. Uh, you all have the information in front of you, this is the old Betties. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the Victuling License?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Famigetti, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirteen, Extended Hours License, Town Council to consider the approval of an extended hours license for Clever Pennefield DBA K and G Diner, eleven thirty-seven Charles Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. I, um, can't bring that up in front of me, so what was the extended hours?
It's until, um, four A M. on Friday and Saturday, just Friday.
Yes, on Friday and Saturdays.
All of the days until, just two in the afternoon.
I would say we, uh, we solicit the, uh, police department's recommendation.
Yeah, um, anything extended, we have a one P M. curfew, one A M. curfew in this town. So, anything past that, we always solicit the recommendation of the police department. So, before we vote on this, I'm gonna make a motion that we send a letter to the police department for their input on this matter.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, that's in the form of a motion. Motion been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, we'll, we'll be in touch.
We know, open regular hours right now, though?
You can open regular hours, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, just not until four A M., you can open till one A M.
One A M.?
Yeah.
Okay, never, thank you.
Do we, do we know if, if Betties, the most recent iteration of it, had still, I know they used to have. They were open until, yeah, they were. They did, right up until, okay.
I just don't know till.
As long as they close to two hours, from four to six, that's where they bring the extension.
Gotta kill my vibe. All right, item number fourteen, thank you very much. Peddler vendor license, Town Council to consider a vote for the approval of a peddler vendor license for mobile food truck for Vanessa Rojas DBA Mommy's Delights, thirty-nine Sampson Avenue, North Providence.
Uh, Mr. Council President?
Yep.
So I, I spoke with Vanessa who cannot make it tonight, she got caught up in Boston on her job. Uh, she, she purchased a, uh, van from Mumsy's Ice Cream and hoped to do a business from it.
Okay, so do you wanna make a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, license for Vanessa Rojas Mammy's Delights.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, mayor?
We've been, uh, seen a problem with some of the other vendors that have, uh, a, a van, so to say, that when they're not out, um, on the street or wherever, when they come home and park, it's creating a problem with some of the neighbors. So you just wanna make sure that, uh, she knows that?
I'm sure she does, she parks it in the driveway, it's been there waiting for this license.
But not operating, correct?
Right now, it's not on.
Yeah, just stay on top of it, because those are the calls we're getting.
All right, thank you, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number fifteen, Dumping Near Knights of Columbus, Kathleen Iozzi requests discussion on dumping in the woods next to the Knights of Columbus on Charles Street. Just state your name for the record, please.
Kathleen Iozzi.
Thank you very much.
And it's, um, can I make a correction, it's not on Charles Street, it's on Bastard Street, which I live right across the street from.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm the last house on, um, a dead-end street, there's only four houses on my street, it's a very short street. So I get to see all the woods in front of me. So I was out in my driveway the other day and I seen a guy in the woods with a shovel, and he was shoveling some, something, I didn't know what it was, into these huge white bags. And, um, when I approached him to ask him what he was doing, because I thought maybe he was cleaning the grounds up, picking up the bottles and the whatever, he told me to mind my own business, to go home, what concern is it of mine?
These are, these are pictures?
Yep, and it's not my land. Well, I know it's not my land, I don't know whose land it was, it's the woods. And, um, it was my neighborhood. And, um, when I went, I, so I went home and I called the police department. And unfortunately, I couldn't wait for the police to arrive, because I had an appointment. Um, but when I went back to investigate the bags, they were all tied up with this huge rope with locks. And on top of the big, big white bags were these plastic covers with holes in them, with the ropes going through them and around the bags. I have no idea what was in those bags, I don't know if it was hazard waste. We have a schoolyard right next to this wooded area where these wood dropped off and filled. Um, we have special needs kids that play in that schoolyard. I have no idea what was, what's in those bags, the police department never called me back, they asked for my phone number, my address, my name, and, um, I ne- never heard from them, hence that's why I'm here.
Well, thank you for coming, and that, that, tho- those, those bags are concerning, so I, I just share them with our, uh,
Yes.
Lieutenant, and, um, after the meeting, I'm gonna give the, a copy of those pictures, if that's okay.
That's fine, actually.
Does anybody, Councilman Pollock has a question for you?
Iozzi, did you by any chance happen to get a license plate off this vehicle?
And that's another thing, the truck, the truck, and he has no license plate on it, that's one of the questions the police officer did ask. Well, I did tell him, he didn't ask me, I said there was no license.
And, and it looked like someone that came off the street, not from the construction that's being done right there.
All I seen was a guy in the woods, and my husband yelled at me because I approached him, I should have never. I didn't have no idea what he was doing. And, um, and then I asked him what he was doing, and that's when he told me to mind my own business, it's no concern of yours, go home. And he said, go effing home. And so I went home and I got my phone and I took a picture.
This, this, I'm sorry, the lower lot, correct, not the Knights, the lower lot?
Nope, my house is here. The Knights of Columbus is here.
Okay.
The schoolyard is here, and the woods are right here.
Okay. So do we know who owns that property?
I don't know, I, forty-six years I lived there, I don't know who owns the woods.
Part of that state.
The, the mayor might have a insight to this.
State.
I think you're right, I think I was right.
We owned the lot next to this young lady's home, it's part of the school, and we rented to the other school that's operating there, but the grassy area is, uh, on some mineral spring, the lines run through there, so it's owned by Rhode Island Energy.
That doesn't look like some Rhode Island Energy would do.
I don't know what's in the bags, and I.
But I, I need to ask, can I ask?
Yeah, yeah.
So they called the police, they didn't respond?
Well, they did, I, I couldn't wait for them, but my husband was in the front yard, so when I came home, I asked my husband if the police stopped, and he says yes. He said they asked me if a guy was in the woods, I said yes.
So he, he.
That was the end of that.
The fellow had been gone by then?
Oh, yeah, the fellow was driving away when I went home to get my camera, my, my phone.
But, but to your point, mayor, if that's Rhode Island Energy's property, we can't go on there and, and look and see, we can?
There's a, there's a, a roadway through there that they traveled for maintenance, I mean, we could go up there. Just because they own it, if, if they're, uh, littering there, they can't.
Thank you.
We, we would address that.
Okay, we're gonna, we have the lieutenant here, he's, we're gonna talk to him after the meeting about that, and we'll get on.
Please let me know if there's any hazardous waste in there, because like I said, there's children over there.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing that.
Okay, absolutely, thank you for listening.
Any questions?
Uh, I don't, I don't have a question, one, one of the things that I would suggest is, it may, may be worth it to take a look at our dumping ordinance, if we have one. Uh, and if we don't have one, uh, I know Providence, Providence is really aggressive, they, they issue fines up to five thousand dollars. And frankly, you know, I, I think it's the right thing to do, because these people have no respect for the town or the neighbors.
Exactly.
They should pay the price, if we can get them, I mean, that's always the, tough to do, but, um, so I, I would request that we also send this to our ordinance committee for potential revamp or creation of some sort of a dumping ordinance.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Martone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number sixteen, Community Choice Aggregation. Freedom Energy Logistics respectfully requests the opportunity to allow CEO Bart Fromarth to make a presentation to the North Providence Town Council to introduce and explain community choice aggregation in electricity program. Is anyone here from that company? Is anyone here from that company? Is anyone here from Community Choice Aggregation? There being none, I will make a motion to remove this from the agenda. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number seventeen, Wayland Elementary School Field Day. Alicia McKay of Wayland P T O requests discussion and possible vote on the use of Knights of Columbus field on Ivan Street for the field day, I've been informed that her and Mayor Lombardi have worked that out, I appreciate that, so moving on to number eighteen. Outstanding debt owed to the North Providence Police Department, discussion and possible vote on monies owed to the police department from Elite Lounge and seven-eight-seven Restaurant and Lounge. This has been a reoccurring issue now for quite some time. So I am gonna entertain a motion to summons Elite Lounge and seven-eight-seven Lounge in for the January council meeting.
January?
June, June, I apologize.
So moved.
Been a long week. A motion been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there any questions? Mayor?
We can straighten this out, when they need a detail, they need to pay that night. Or, or by the way, before we send our police officers, they need to make sure that we're.
Yeah.
So it doesn't build up any longer.
Well, if we, if they're required to have the. Well, if we, if they're required to have the police department and they don't pay, why are we not at least doing something so they can't open?
Well, the only, the only thing we can do is pull the license. My question is, when they, they, they made a change of ownership and we weren't satisfied? I'm, I'm not sure. Did they make a change, Marianne?
No, they, they added, Elite had added a third person.
Mr. Chairman and members of the council, what bothers me here is that we met with them.
Mm-hmm.
We relieved them of one night.
Are we, we're talking Elite or seven-eight-seven?
Seven-eight-seven, seven-eight-seven.
Yeah, seven-eight-seven, we relieved them one night of, of a detail, so we saved them some money to try to work with them.
Yeah, I know, I mean, yeah, remember.
Councilman Famigetti?
I would ask, we didn't vote on that motion, right?
No.
I'd ask if, uh, whoever made the motion would amend the motion so that the summons goes out to bring both of the parties in for an amendment to their, to address this in an amendment to their license to conform to what the mayor said.
Okay.
Requiring prepayment.
Okay, that is an amended motion. Who, who made that motion?
Ronnie.
By Councilman Bacala, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, any questions on that?
And, and the other thing that just, you know, that we're trying to, what we are discussing is that keep in mind, when we provide a detail, our officers in the next payroll period get paid. We wait for our money. So, we may want to change that also. Because I don't know that the taxpayers should be funding for the detail and then we're on the hook. Uh, just something to think about.
Uh, Councilman Matone, how do they do it in Providence, is that, not to put you on the spot, but.
I, I'm, I'm not sure that we can place a new condition on their license, we can talk about that next month. What I think we need to do is we need to send this to the ordinance committee for an ordinance with regard to how detailed bills are handled and what the repercussions are if they're not paid or, you know, when you can kind of accelerate payment or require prepayment. I think we should, we should try and get an ordinance on the books.
Okay.
We can't, I'm sorry. They've already agreed to pay what they've owed, made a payment arrangement, I'm referring to seven-eight-seven with the police department, which they're obviously not honoring. So, does this still have to go on, so can they, can this be addressed based on that issue alone?
Uh, maybe. I, 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 I don't, I don't know that I've ever seen.
Well, first thing we could do is make, let's vote on my motion, then you can make your motion to send it to ordinance and we can address the issues of payment next month.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the ayes have it. Lieutenant, can you, can you just, I, I see the, do you have what they owe in front of you?
I do, the Colonel asked me to, to comment on it, um, seven-eight-seven owes sixty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen. And Elite Lounge owes fifteen thousand one hundred and eighty-six.
One hundred and eighty-six?
Yes, sir.
Is there?
Can I ask you one question on Elite? Are they letting you, if I'm not mistaken, I heard that they weren't allowing the police to go in there or do something?
I'm not aware of that, um, I know that there's no more details at Elite. Right, I think we stopped details at Elite.
And this is all backed from?
This is all backed, right?
Okay.
So, um, and we've made several attempts to contact both establishments to make payment. Um, seven-eight-seven did make a payment in April of twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, but they still.
It's sizable amount.
If I, if I may.
Councilman?
Sorry, so they made a payment of twenty-five hundred, but you know what they're incurring on a monthly basis? It's five thousand dollars, yeah, it's the.
Yeah, I think it's.
I think they give us a number of five dollars.
Detail a week. So it's probably about two thousand dollars a month.
Any other questions?
Uh.
Councilman?
You know, I'm, I'm so pro-business, it's unbelievable, but when is enough enough with that place? I, I'm, I'm concerned, you know, when, sixty-one thousand dollars.
I agree.
When, 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 when do you say, we had enough, now that's it, it's over, it's, we're done, I just, I don't know.
But I think you gotta pay up in order to have the license.
What's that?
You should have to pay up to have the license at this point to keep it going, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, is there any other questions? Mario, did you want to make a motion to send this to the ordinance committee?
Yes, I'll make a motion to send it to the ordinance committee to, for us to consider a, uh, ordinance with regard to, uh, how details are handled.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? All those in favor, all those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number nineteen, International Municipal Lawyers Association, discussion and possible vote to approve membership for the town of North Providence and the International Municipal Lawyers Association, but a fee structure not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars for annual membership and a thousand dollars for associated expenses, expenditures. This is, uh, so our legal counsel can go to these conferences and learn the new procedures in municipal government, open meetings, information and, and all that. Um, I feel as though it's good for him to go to this.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those oppose, the ayes have it. Item number twenty, CDBG Grant Resolution twenty-five dash zero, zero, five. Receive request for discussion and vote from CDBG Project Manager Maria Rosa Takuma for an authorizing resolution regarding applying for community development block grant. Just state your name for the record, please?
Hi, how are you guys?
Doing well, thank you.
Uh, well, uh, we are want to be able to be sure that you guys have aware about the CBDG efforts into the town of North Providence. We have a competition, I did pass around, and right here. Actually are part of our compliance. It is a public, uh, hearing notice and this will be completing our process to competition to asking your permission to be able to have, uh, today, uh, decision into our projects and to be able to have our citation. So, we did start the competitions way back into, you know, into February, the mayor actually make a soft announcement. By March fourteen, we actually given to them in the council second floor chambers, we did the public first hearing for this. Uh, April fourteen, we got, uh, two P M in planning office, they will, and then I have to be able to proceed and deposit their projects for all nonprofits and as well town members who will be actually competing, any other projects. April sixteen of six P M in second floor in council chambers, it was the second public hearing. And we had a lot of participation of citizens, in fact, some of them as well, uh, they was here last time and you guys was, some of your guys was present in that public hearing. May sixth, this is the second, that's the roar of the council chambers and this public is to make adoption of the resolutions for our projects. The projects are actually, I put right there, uh, the project that we are looking for it. Uh, we have for the town, that's the original documents that we submitted in the second hearing. Uh, after a meeting with the mayor, actually, we ended up deciding that we don't go for it for the six projects from the city. Instead of the six projects from the city, we decide because as CBDG, uh, require, we have only three spots to be able to main, uh, any other project for what is a public hearing, you know, public facilities or, or improvements. And then in that case, we giving, uh, one spot. So we have two projects that we are wanting to tell from the town and was very well, um, uh, they had a, an okay, you know, and well, uh, Maryville revitalization, so a lot of people want to voucher for that project which is consisting of beautification of the area, including sidewalks, signage, arborization, placement of garbage bin along the walk, the walking paths, lining and enhancements of that area. As you know, and the people who was in that time, I showed different, uh, pictures and you can see in right there of the area, they are very, uh, disturbing for the pathways and, and they can be able to come actually get to an accident, so we want to be able to beautify that part of Maryville. And the second project that we actually selected in the town side will be actually, uh, the old town hall repairs and improvements. So besides the other six projects that we have, uh, and those two projects will be in the category of improvements and public land, and then as well, we did have another one for CBDG planning and community service activities. The supporting services for communities because we do holding every summer, I actually holding up, uh, housing, you know, fair for all, uh, eventing here in the chambers actually, and we want to have, you know, expanding that service as well. Every time that we do anything like this, every advertisement of this, it costs us a lot of money. So we asking as well for that. And, and to the private sides and the nonprofits, they actually participating, we have different agencies. Some of those agencies that participating was actually Fogarty Center. They asking money for, uh, the roof repairs and then as well, we had Moms of Mary Bills. Uh, Fogarty Center will be part of that three spots that we have for the improvements. Moms of Mary Bill will be one of the spots for service. Uh, they want to be able to provide food for the community and the other spot will be for actually, uh, a dental project from Tree County. So those are the selecting projects that we have, we did actually consider the amount of money that we want to be able to pursue to be, you know, um, had more chance to win, it will be less amount of money, so we actually get into, into that.
Yeah. Councilman Bacala has a question here.
What I'm reading here is it's a million fifteen thousand right here?
Correct, million fifteen thousand.
So that, that million, is that for these four projects that are in front of me?
Those, those million and fifteen thousand will be for, uh, the town hall, the, same Maryville.
Four projects that are.
Maryville and the three projects that you have right there in your hands, so there are actually five projects total.
And I see all the paperwork that's in here, is each one the dollar amount for each one in here?
Town Hall is in here, the two projects for the town hall, that's why you see only four papers.
Okay.
Because the other, the two projects from the town are included in CD's paper.
So I just want to see the, the application as far as.
So.
What money's going for which project?
So, we got for, uh, the town, for Maryville, we had five hundred thousand. I think that's the town, no, the Maryville revitalization project.
How about the other, the other projects?
Um, I think you guys have in the resolution already and then we have as well for the a town hall repairs, we got a hundred and fifty thousand.
One, I'm sorry, one?
Hundred and fifteen?
A hundred and fifty thousand, five zero for the town hall projects.
And Moms of Maryville?
Moms of Maryville, they will get in a hundred thousand.
And Fogarty Center?
Will get in a hundred and fifty thousand considering they receive anything since PY eighteen and with that consideration, we want to be able to support it.
So if I can. So, uh, we were.
Have, sorry, Councilman, we do have Tree County as well, they will receive in a hundred thousand. Considering that they have been competing in, in lightly, they have been receiving PYs recently uh, for the other years, so we considering in this round, they are a, you know, a well organization, they always serve the community, so we don't want to let them out and we.
So basically, you're asking us to pass this resolution for those four projects, correct, so that way?
Five.
Five, what's the fifth?
Two from the city.
Yep.
Which is Maryville, revitalization. Town Hall is another project.
Yep.
And then the three nonprofits organization. And as well, the other project from the town will be the, the, the one for the planning department. Which is the, the, the planning department projects.
We don't, we don't have that.
Uh, yes, it's right there in that, in, in this one right here. You have it, it will be.
North Providence Town Hall.
Number one will be Maryville, number two will be all city hall repairs and the project for the town planning was number four. So you can see it in the page of the presentation, uh, right here, and this part.
So by passing this, you would be going out and applying for all, all of these, correct? I was at the meeting, Councilman Pollock was at the meeting, Council President Odeelo was at the, uh, the meeting. I thought they were all good projects and, uh, I'm recommending that we pass this so that we can go out and get these grants.
Good. Can I ask you a couple of questions? Uh, are, are any of these, uh, and I know Moms of Maryville, I don't think they've ever gotten one. Fogarty Center or Tri-Town, are either of those, uh, one of the organizations that have had the paperwork problems?
Uh, it was Tree County. But they have already in favor, they have a new, a new person in place, they are actually have been doing a fantastic work to be able to provide paperwork back in the problems that they did have for quite a bit and they have been actually provide the paperwork, so I.
What, what were the issues they were having, obviously?
Paperwork.
Yeah. I mean, what were the issues, what kind of the issues with the paperwork?
It's just basically, there was like, um, I think the, the person who was before managing the program or the paperwork didn't understand exactly how they'd be able to record it and how much, you know, recording has to be. Because even so, they go into training, that is very finicky, every project that we do for CBDG, we do have to report. We have to report income, we have to report, you know, what gender they are, the person who receive the service, we have to report as well, you know, if it's a female, if it's a male, if it's a veteran as well, uh, as well, we do have to report if it's.
They said.
LMA.
They correct, they get that corrected.
Mm-hmm, and yes, and the project that they do have for the dental services, the only thing they asking is for be able to get, uh, a dental, um, assistant and as well to part of the doctor. The only thing with the paperwork right there and I already mentioned to them and they agree is they actually, they will be have records for, and when they will be had service for North Providence residents, they will comply with the LMA, the low moderate income bracket, which is less than twenty-one percent. And they will be complying with that, they assure me that.
I, I think they're a good organization that does good work.
Yes.
I, I have no problem supporting them. What I have a problem with is us putting our, sticking our necks out there, being on the hook for money and then them not doing the paperwork and then we're left holding the bag where we're not getting our money, they're getting their money, state is fine and then we're, we're paying, so are we one hundred percent confident that they will be able to do this paperwork and we will get fully reimbursed for all this?
And that favor, and I'm sorry, may I pay, I just, I.
First of all, there was, excuse me. There was a change in personnel on the state level also that created some issues with us. I will tell you this, Mario, we're not exchanging one penny unless state gives us the money.
Okay.
So I just want to let you know, we are not on the hook, not, not crossing us one penny unless we receive the money from the program.
Okay, well, there has been a problem in the past though, right, Mayor, with the paperwork, there's been a problem in the past.
For the paperwork, but even though there's been a problem with the paperwork, Steve, it hasn't cost the town any money.
Yeah, right, I know that, yeah.
And, and I, I can be able to assure they, I, I actually don't produce any checks and they can be able to tell them, even though sometimes it's not easy to tell them that and they're not happy about that. And but they resolved and they're actually making a great effort and they did provide the paperwork. I didn't release that check until I got the paperwork. Because I think that's my duty since I've been here for the last two years and this will be my third year with you guys. That's what is, I've been complying with any regulation and every single bracket that we have. If they don't comply, I not release that check, if I not have the contract with the state, I do not release that check. And if I not have that amendment, I not release that check, so I think that in this case, we are secure that we'll getting the money back, so I'm very, very stick to the regulation.
Okay.
Just one last thing, there's only eleven million dollars available for thirty-nine communities.
Right.
We were late to ask for seven or eight million.
Yes.
But we know that's wishful thinking.
I understand.
So we try to be fair with all of rooms of Maryville, Fogarty, Tri-County, uh, so, just try to be.
And, and Mayor, theoretically, they can give us less, right, so if we ask, you ask for a hundred thousand, they could say, we'll give you.
Oh, that's right.
Twenty, right?
Correct.
Say, you know, we're looking for a million. They may, they may end up with some a thousand.
Well, three hundred, basically, that will be actually, if you, if you see in it right here, we had for PY twenty-three.
Okay, wait one second.
Five millions.
Maria, Maria?
Yes.
Council people have questions, Councilor Portio?
Currently, of, how much have we drawn down on CBD?
How much we drawing down the CBD? Uh, we got a hundred and eighty, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, uh, a hundred and forty-nine thousand. around a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, around that age, that's where we draw and we expecting to receive that money back from the state.
Alright, so.
So the money that we give out, because they did comply with the paperwork, I expecting to have that money back again to the state completely full.
For example, St. Mary's closed, we couldn't even retrieve the money that was committed to them. So give it to the town, CDBG took it back.
That was close to seven hundred thousand, then I won and then they took it back because it was no compliance and it will be no way to apply that project. So they took that money back, you know, they never actually giving us the money. We are always paid first, then after they reimburse us. So the main thing in this program is to comply with every single way that we actually have to be doing the requisitions, every single way that we have to be able to comply with the paperwork about that demographics and low moderate income and all the rules and regulations. And that's, that's basically what I've been doing for the last two years. And that's the reason why they didn't have the check early on until now, because they didn't comply by that point. But now they do have a new person, Jennifer, which I can testify, they actually, she's doing a great job and she provide me the paperwork. There I was needed.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, we have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash zero, zero, five.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-one, support on general assembly bills, discussion and vote on the passage of a resolution in support of Senate Bill S zero, zero, five, seven, and House Bill H five-three-nine-three concerning state responsibility for sidewalk maintenance along state highways. Uh, Mayor, I believe you asked for a resolution to support these. You all have the, uh, legislation in front of you. Is there any questions on it?
So obviously, that's the sidewalks on Smith Street, Middle Spring Avenue, Tugboat Savage, everything.
Yeah.
They want us.
Problems everywhere.
They'll, they, they really want the, uh, citizens towns to, uh, be responsible and through the League of Citizens and Towns, uh, most of the communities are passing that resolution.
Okay, any questions on the resolution? I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, Encompass Park, Councilman Pollock requests discussion and possible vote on traffic and placement of stop signs around Encompass Park.
Yes, Lieutenant Ginden, can you come up if you don't mind? But I put this on the agenda, uh, that traffic between Chow Street and Langdon Street, going by Encompass Park is kind of become a throughway, speedway. We were recently at the, uh, Easter egg hunt and we witnessed cars flying through the parking lot. We're just concerned that there's kids in that neighborhood and there's no stop signs at all coming by, uh, Josephine Street, past El Frenello, coming in from Langdon Street. And, uh, I asked Lieutenant Ginden to, uh, put his opinion on that also. I think he, you know.
I concur, I, there's no stop signs down there. Uh, the traffic through there, you know, it's a cut through. Now we have the park, so it is a concern.
So I'd just like to maybe send this to the ordinance committee if that's the appropriate.
Second. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Pollock, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Item number twenty-three, litterling, littering on property, Councilman Pollock requests discussion and possible vote on littering, littering on property located at ten seventy-four Middle Spring Avenue.
Yes, I'd just like to, uh, have the clerks and correspondents to the appropriate, I guess, the owner or manager of that, uh, location to address the littering on and around their property.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Pollock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-four, Fruit Hill Grant, Councilman Laporte, you request discussion, possible vote on an update on the Fruit Hill Grant. Councilman?
Mayor? Where's that?
Where'd you go? Can you grab the mayor?
Question on the Fruit Hill Grant.
I love Bernie, I think Bernie took off already, so Fruit Hill Avenue, the grant, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Keep getting calls from that Indian village.
Yep.
Where do we stand on it? I mean, we've got the money, they said two thousand, uh, in, in March of twenty-four.
And we got a second grant on it too for the lower end.
Right.
And I, did you ask, um, Dave, all of the, um, drawings?
No.
Dave D'Amico?
Uh, I thought he was staying tonight for this.
No.
I don't know if you know.
I thought it's moving along, Steve. I, uh, I can call you and tell you exactly where we are with it, cause I'm gonna call him.
Okay. Um, alright, can I make a motion and we put this to the, uh, next, to the June meeting and have Dave here for this, please?
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Laporte, was seconded by Councilman Martone. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. So there, there is drawings for this?
Oh, absolutely.
Alright. Yeah, we'll have him bring those drawings. Item number twenty-five.
I think there was, uh, uh, two grants and we received the second grant also.
So it's total, total, uh, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand?
Yeah, I think that was the total, yeah.
Alright. Alright, thank you. Item number twenty-five, poll locations, discussion and possible regard to the approval by the town council concerning poll locations on Fairview, View Avenue, Remington Street and Maguire Road. Any questions on the poll locations? Um, a motion's been made by Councilman Martone, is there a seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, board appointments, town council discussion action regard to the board appointments to be made to the following boards. Reappointments, A, purchasing board, Joanne McCary, B, juvenile herring aboard, Aaron Pitichelli Blanco. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Pollock. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And new appointment, Board of Canvases, John Lynch Junior. Do I have a motion to appoint John Lynch Junior? Motion's been made by Councilman Laporte, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, license renewals, received applications for the renewal of victualling holiday sales, extended hours, twenty-four hour laundry, firearms, peddler vendor and jujitsu karate licenses. You all have the list in front of you. Can I bundle them together or? Can I bundle them together? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the victualling license as filed?
Mr. President, I, I would, I would request that we pull out, uh, that we approve them as a batch, but pull out seven-eight-seven and Elite Lounge and continue them to next month.
Okay, a motion's been made to approve all the victualling license and accept seven-eight-seven and Elite Lounge.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion to approve the holiday sales?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion to approve extended hours and twenty-four hour licenses?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala. Motion to approve laundry licenses?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Motion to approve the firearms dealer?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Famigetti, seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. A motion to appro- approve the peddler vendor licenses?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And a motion to approve jujitsu and karate licenses?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala and seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-eight, Our Lady of Fatima Hospital, discussion, possible vote on the sale of Our Lady of Fatima Hospital. You all know the information, that's out on the news, um, nothing new, so I'll move on to item number twenty-nine. Tax abatements under a thousand dollars. Town council discussion action and possible vote for the approval of the listed tax abatements under a thousand dollars received from the tax assessor and the amount of forty-six dollars and eight cents for real estate, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and sixty cents for motor vehicles and six hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents for tangibles.
Motion to approve.
A motion, a motion been made by Councilman Martone, seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo. All those in favor? All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty, tax abatements over a thousand dollars, town council discussion action vote for the approval of the listed tax abatements over a thousand dollars received from the tax assessor and the amount of twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-four cents for motor vehicles. So a motion to send this to the finance committee.
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Martone. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty-one, ordinance committee report. Town council discussion action regard to the ordinance committee report to presented by Councilman Famigetti. Councilman?
Thank you. So we reviewed an ordinance in, uh, from North Smithfield that, uh, deals with business registration licensing. Administration, uh, indicated to us that this would be good for us to keep track of the businesses that we have in town, make sure they're compliant with taxes and fire codes. Um, we are recommending the adoption of the same style of emotion, which would have a twenty-five dollar annual filing fee beginning September first, twenty twenty-five, recurring annually every September first. And additionally, there would be, uh, penalties for the first month of non-compliance of one hundred dollars, an additional two hundred and fifty dollars for the second month of non-compliance, an additional five hundred for the third month of non-compliance and a referral to the, uh, municipal court for collection of fees and potentially shutting down of the, the business for non-compliance. So with that, I'd like to, uh, introduce this at the next, uh, uh, council meeting.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Laporte. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty-two, Public Safety Committee Report, Town Council Discussion Action regard to the Public Safety Committee Report to be presented by Councilman Pollock. Councilman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a couple of, uh, items. We, uh, voted to send, uh, correspondence to Brandoja, the grant writer and Senator Reed just to get a grant update that supposedly was approved for West River Parkway and, uh, St. John Circle, to get a status on that. Also, uh, upon the police department's recommendation, we denied, we voted to deny the twenty-four hour license for Sam's Mart. And the last thing, we're gonna be having a special meeting, uh, with the people from X-Side Drive.
Okay. Councilman Pollock like to make a motion to accept the report, seconded by Councilman Laporte. All those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And item number thirty-three, claims submitted, Town Council Discussion and Possible Vote Forgot the Claims Received From the Following. Edward Gulovich, eleven Riada Drive, Lincoln, Rhode Island, zero-two-eight-six-five. Do I have a motion to send this to the Claims Committee? Motion been made by Councilman Bacala, seconded by Councilman Famigetti. All those in favor?
Alright.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.